I don't think they're allowed. I think they can. It's fine. It's just a couple of motions.
Are you assuming?
Yes. I'll.
I'm later.
I'm at two. I have water here. Okay. Okay.
I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think you're going to get out of here. You're going to be in the water. So you're not even going to please. You're not putting your snow on your shirt. Walk it down. I don't think they're allowed. I think they're not.
But she got out. On an highway, there's a girl. We have a close. They want. This. The police have to do that. That's the problem. I see my good friend. You got that weight. Oh, okay. Great. Good head. I think you're wrong. You said school. I get that. Okay. We're going to call Grand Junction City Council. I need a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve a consent agenda.
There are a couple of equipment recycling programs. We made a word P ninety seven. So it was supposed to be nine minutes. Go ahead.
I will look. I know that we just received the June plus nine and forty seven. I believe. I will have to look at some of the other four hundred plus.
I didn't. I was very sorry. The water is a little bit. They're watering. Basically, they're out of money.
Which one is that?
That is twelve. Yeah. Plus one.
We can't carry it back here.
Let's put it in fire. Not in the middle of the kitchen.
Okay. What was it? To find a lot of water. We can find it.
That was an irrigation. Because there was a lot on that address.
Okay. So that was basically in place to put the fire hydrant.
The fire hydrant. There was a leak.
And there's a lot. I asked the car. It was that.
That's the fire department? Yes.
All right. Collins. Three minutes per person. No action taken.
Um, I think it's okay. I'd like to go first. Um, my first one is to apologize. One to Joe Ma. Um, I gave you a really hard time not understanding that you needed to be called. You know, if we needed help here. I just assumed that you were part of if that you would be here. Um, you've been to make help and I thank you very much for that. I am sorry for giving you a hard time. The other part is to Rick. Um, the way you spoke and I, I don't need anything from any peanut gallery. The way you spoke to people out here, um, the vicars, the beacons. I am allowed to speak on their behalf. They said so. Um, they had prior engagements. You can listen to the tape. Was appalling. Um, they were like a written and a verbal apology. When they left, that's when you apologized to council. As far as I'm concerned, on my part, you hit when you got here. Yes, you, you went out there and you gung ho and this was nothing but tile, tile, tiles. That's not your job. Your job is to go around and help the ordinances be followed. And so far, that hasn't happened. You seem to be doing what's best for Rick. It needs to be what's best for Grand Junction. You are not from here. We all have a vested interest in Grand Junction. Brett, I thank you for going above and beyond, even when I'm just so you could poke me so much. But you do. You spread yourself very thin and I pick at you. And I, but I do thank you more than you realize. And for the clerk, you should never, ever again. We are coun- we are people that are citizens that, again, people of that are on council, that work for the city of Grand Junction, do work for us. We pay taxes here. I own businesses here. I would have owned another one had you not stepped in. Which it'll happen. It'll happen. I'm not concerned. But the point is that was very rude, the way you spoke to a council person. Now, as like I, like I had told you, as his, and looking down at the clock, because I can help it. As his, as a council, again, gets to speak, put a couple of seconds on him. As a council person, you should, you should never spoke to him that way. As his wife, never should to him like that again.
I do.
I would like to say that Rick has that as a compliance officer. Because I've been making, I've been sending letters and he just gave me off and said, hey, you might not be able to do it on here. Give me a call. We need to trade here. I got. He sends it out and he sends out, say, hey, your government. But he gives those people's office, say, hey, why don't you come help them out here? For evidence. So I don't think you should be doing that. You actually help them. Because things are going to change every night. You gotta let everything change now. Everything gonna happen. You gotta listen. If you want something to change, you gotta help. You cannot expect. But it's just, you know, okay, I gotta get it done right now. I don't have time for that. Yeah. If things happen, you let things slide, well, things are gonna go bad. But if you want to change, you gotta go to your help. And you can't just say, oh, Rick, you're supposed to make these people do this. No, Rick's trying to fix it. He is offering help. Obviously, he is offering their help.
How about that, Spencer? Because Rick has sent me letters too, or my kids' letters. And it's done very well. So I have my sense of it on that.
Next. Can I be next? Um, Secretary, I was wondering if you ever checked on that Economic Development Authority grant that we could get for the city? I put it in an email to you and come up and told you.
You said you were going to come talk about it at the meeting. That I did not check on that.
You should have had it checked on to see at least it's going.
You told me you were going to talk about it. So therefore, you did not ask me to check on it.
That's your job. But someone comes to you with the grant that we could possibly get.
If that's the case.
That is your job.
If that is the case, you should have said, please check on this before the meeting. So I didn't present it. You told me you were presenting it.
I, no. I said, I wanted to bring it up. I didn't say I was going to apply for it. I wanted to, I wanted you to look into it, to apply. If we're going to get this, if we're going to get these sewers and water lines that we need money.
We can talk about that during the agenda.
Well, you need to check through that, please.
You should have told me that. That is not what your email said. You said, put it on the agenda and I did. Next.
Do you mean?
Yes. Actually, who runs these meetings? Does the town people that we elected, council members, they actually run it or does one thing? She runs everything? I'd like to know who's who on this. I mean, it seemed like the last two couple of clerks did the same thing too. Thank you, Brett. And how well did we check this one out? And is she still on the professional field? Period. I mean, yeah, we voted these councilmen. Hopefully, they will sit up there and say something. She should just be sitting there taking notes. Somebody give her job instructions. Everybody kind of knows where it is.
Anybody else?
Jerry, I don't know the new city clerk, but it's getting said. Mine was saying city clerk, monthly, at the city council meeting, just decided this is America. Correct?
Yes. That is my job was assisting the board with that council.
Okay. On that note, I knew that wasn't one of my original things. But there's a couple of things on the agenda that the city probably comes with first. So I'm going to stick them on. But I'm going to visit the city chief and discuss state clerk duties and leave for financial officer Brian. I'm assuming the city council has researched and knows what the city ordinance says and requires to do. Am I correct? And I'm referring to section two, five, eight, under chapter five of the city ordinance. The city clerk, I'm sorry, two chapters, three, number seven. City clerk shall be the city chief, accounting officer of the city. Oh, I'm talking to city ordinance. Under chapter two, five, eight, city clerk shall be the city budget officer, municipal preparing budget, data, cooperation with city council or manager, and support to that ordinance. Also, city code Iowa, section three, seventeen, point thirteen, number four. Nothing to hear. I don't know your name, ma'am.
My name is Conrad.
Okay. I have a concern. Not, nothing personally against you. It's that I don't know you. This is the third city clerk. The city council or the city has not had an office by the state. Am I correct?
I don't think so.
Was that?
Didn't he tell me they did an audit here? Like right before, or maybe?
Yeah. The state of Iowa was here for our.
And not to check on the actual date.
Iowa said that. I'm going to remind you now, I guess, because we're the state of Iowa. They allowed it.
We take four.
Was that?
Four or five years ago, we have four blocks.
But we got it. And having that. And when that went out, it came to your city clerk.
I don't know. Everything's fine, I guess.
No, she turned it. And so you don't know. I have my audit, but that's fine. I don't know all the details. But her termination papers, as you put in the council, are simply stated. Per state order of the city ordinance, there is no position of city treasurer or finance officer. It is city clerk's responsibility. Your ordinance says that and who's bringing it by your places.
We've got a big meeting. We're going to move on.
That's not fair. You need to give us time to speak and say what we want.
You did it during open, open comments, which that is not right. It is on the agenda to be discussed right there. So we're discussing it during public comments and it's on the agenda. So we need to move on so we can get to the agendas.
Jerry, if the city council was a master of modern finance, it's a judicial position. For the state, to the state office. And I will get a one hundred cent to the department.
Moving right along.
Oh. Oh, where? Uh, I go to that. I think it's great that we watched you preview that portion of, uh, Main Street. But I think we might want to focus on infrastructure, actually. Sewer, sand, everything, the same thing. And all the other utilities down there. Just because you don't really know a lot of land and things to check out or replace. So I mean, great. Yeah, it's nice to have brand new road. But if something breaks, you're just destroying that. That's actually to put on the next meeting.
Moving on. Next, Iowa. Mississippi ladies alcohol license. Better see.
I just never had to talk about it before. Yes. We got our information from the state. He's ready to go.
I have to agree with the license from Mississippi ladies.
Stick it right there. Again, stick it right there. Make sure. No. Because I have one. Not because of you. Chat goes.
Next, recycling. Katrina and I went to the, as you all know, we didn't have a discussion of this recycling. Wheels down. The biggest problem is people aren't bending it up for cardboard. Putting it, not to put it in our holes, which means twice the loads. Probably the four hundred dollars before. All extra loads. But anyway, we went to the meeting and it was kind of complicated, this contract. But we got out of it. It was supposed to get out of the meeting, but for out of the contract. If you did, you had to pay for one full year, even when you didn't get the service. We negotiated to get out of the contract and give our service for one year. Because it's no sense in paying for a year and not having the service. And other people lined up. We have to deal with them because they haven't paid them. Just will get the service for them.
Jerry, can I ask, did he actually sell that to you? Because your great associate, the next board of supervisors meeting, he went up in front of them and said, if you wanted to get out of it, that was after your guys' meeting. Both board supervisors wanted to get out of it and that he was going to present a proposal for the next recycling.
At this meeting.
The next recycling meeting this month.
Katrina and I went to, I think there were three members there, plus one member from the board of supervisors. He located secretary from where she located. With the way that we wound up, which neither one of us were happy about the outcome, but.
Right.
We're, we're out of it. In other words, we don't have a vote. But we don't have to pay a full year of the service. You still have to pay it, at least we get the service.
Right. Remember, I wanted to, if we talked about this on the stage. But according to the message from the supervisor, I suppose we're going to have to vote. And if recycling, we're going to have meetings and sometime in two years. And that's it.
I took the vote. There was a motion. They voted it was all on. I just care what's in this line.
Okay.
So yes.
I just wondered what mine's going to bring back from your next recycling meeting.
This is going to burn. But might be the city's withdrawal is to be effective June thirty twenty twenty two. Service is to continue as normal till June thirty twenty twenty two. The month in charge for the service to remain at current price as the date of the motion that we're talking about, they approved as of May twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. But I gotta have your take.
Didn't want to get caught with something with Palmer each other at the next meeting.
Do what?
We did, I don't want to get caught. Find out Palmer had some other idea.
Well, I'm not.
So.
Of all the.
Might have to read this, this again.
But we have to do a review. Letter before the roof. I mean, the supervisor, it was their doctor. He's, he's on the recycling committee for Green County.
I hope we send this draft. I think it's a little.
But I need to have them people going to go that way. Because if we don't sign out, we're stuck for another year.
I move, I move. We approve this thing to an official letter. Here's a word draft on the consent.
Also, regarding this recycling. I think we need something that fiber resigning down there. The, for people to match their cardboard, flatten out before they put it in there. Otherwise, it's too bulky. It takes places. We need to take.
Okay. We need to post on our Facebook page and get it all out there that cardboard can go in any position on that dumpster. Cardboard can go onto the plastic side. If the thing is dumped into one bin, it's not going to be sold. We've got that, how many times did it go with that?
Through down the road, we'll get into the camera situation. There's going to be a camera there. Maybe having some kind of order or something that's not done correctly.
I know I've gone in there because there's boxes of our.
I know you have.
They have addresses on. I contacted people and said, hey, help us out. Smash your box. I get to do that.
But they don't pay attention until they get their, get their wall. This doubles the price of that recycling.
They're taking the back, back to the house.
Okay. Moving on. Rental property inspection committee.
We got, um. In Trudan, in Trudan and Lynn.
In what, what?
We got the there coast and Trudan and Lynn. We're in the process of comparing our bodies. Got a venue, got a, and we're working on dating to get back together to meet, to go over and repair artists with theirs to work out some meat.
We don't have a good report back.
Sure. That, that helps us.
Brett?
Yeah. So like we talked last meeting for the P R guitar. Uh, I got four extra blog calls. I did add another one in there. We don't have, obviously, we don't, you guys don't have to accept that. It's from on Thirteenth Street going north, just around, uh, named in the river. It's actually a short track coming out of that building. Uh, I know you've been having a lot of trouble with sport, but getting stuff there. I put this, uh, co patch in there. But I put that on top of it. Did that seal better than? Uh, but that's what I added. Sixteen, that's everything behind David Shaw. That then lost sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And then that circle objective, I thought was what this thirty two, seventy and two ninety five is.
This down here, the most farm.
No, that's, that's going to be concrete.
Marge. More than all of them are old or.
Yeah, that's already approved of concrete. Yeah. So this is, this is everything west, right? Everyone west and then four, four locks had, call it, I guess, four or five. So five actually on top of what I had last time. And then I don't know. You guys have your packet. I did get the official quote of four main roads, four Main Street. That's the next one.
This one to you. The cameras. We need to approve the yellow code.
Oh, no. You motioned to do the same, go for a seal code.
Oh, no.
I made a mistake. I heard a bit of the skill.
I'll second. See how you finish, great people. Oh, my God. Need a resolution proving the south end entered fund, low policy from the city of Grand Junction. Another word for one fund, a book in another fund.
Didn't that sound rejected?
Pardon?
It was, it was all under the roads. In the, in the beginning, I was confused. I thought it was the same repairs. I thought we're all talking about the same thing. She wouldn't. And obviously, we're not. Main Street is not the original area that state built. Right now, we're only approving the resolution that the city council is able to get the loan from another fund. We're not actually approving the bill itself. We're not approving that at all. We're simply approving the resolution.
We're the city twenty hour one place to put it on.
We're not approving it in our department.
Just the resolution, or we can put it up till July, and if the resolution on hand is whether or not we can actually do an inter fund loan itself. Then there'll be another resolution for the year itself, once the resolution. You said you actually wanted to take a loan from one account to the other. So that's why we had to do a resolution, because John has received it.
My concern on that for funds is, once you're aligned and thought, if it's randomly pointed out, I don't know what our infrastructure looks like. We got, we got a large amount in our sewers, yes, it would be nice to get that roof fixed. But what are we all up against? We, I know we're supposed to get, if you look at the, the three to twelve land interest. Which we did, yeah. But yeah, there was, there was another, I'll show it to you. But yeah, there was another one, a hundred and seven, and that was for infrastructure, that would be for sewers, water and things like that. But now how much do we get a ton of that money? You know, we're, we're, we just had another water break. Your boat, there's a water break. That's a ton of money. Yes, I would love to see the road straight. Everybody.
Those are none of the half, you heard that? Over five per minute.
But still, you're opening, you're gonna reopen the street to fix the stuff that needs to be fixed. Instead of just fixing it down there, we need to look at fixing the whole thing. I mean, nothing's been stuck out there for two weeks because it's stuck. And to me, that's interfering with traffic. We're going in other people's yards. You know, I wouldn't appreciate that. We need to look at the big picture. And look at fixing it instead of covering all the breaks.
When did, if we ever had our sewer, storm drain, just can't really, and you can't find reason?
Yes, yeah.
I want five years. What'd we find out? Did we get it all done?
Uh, I don't know if all of that done, it's mandatory, didn't. And everybody looked pretty good.
You go to county five, too, though.
Yeah.
You go to county five, too, though.
So you said that one's it?
I, again, it comes back to if she would look into that grant or whatever it was, and if she's sitting there not doing, not, and she was on her cell phone when I come in, she could be looking at stuff that, wherever we could get money and hopefully help fix this stuff.
We're taking care of that. Last, last meeting, you invented financially on the business.
That hundred and seven thousand.
Hundred and twenty-five, wasn't it?
Hundred and seven. Yeah, hundred and seven thousand, because of care to act, supposed to give within two things. That summary in twelve, twelve, explaining that. There's still work in the detail. They sent emails and I sent emails, everybody, look at us, take a quick, just look at us. If all of this is just approving that we're gonna do it, but not approving that we're doing it?
That's right. Yeah. You have permission to borrow one fund, a book.
And that gives us another month to figure out if one of those funds are done. And more on our infrastructure to.
We don't have to act on this.
What?
We wouldn't have to act necessarily.
Correct. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Brett's for featuring this, he makes it to years from now, Mark, we're not relying too hard. Look how long Brett's been waiting on FEMA. But look how long he's been waiting on FEMA. You know, so we have.
So you went to. I'll, I'll move to the, for Brad's, twenty twenty-one, seriously, fourteen inch two.
Excuse me, can I just hear the number of, what was that?
Twenty twenty-one, zero six one four dash oh two.
You remember, maybe you don't remember. I was before you, they were on authorized to get these cameras. We kind of talked about using the wifi that we had here, putting an antenna on top of a water tower that would reach two or three places as, as we needed. I read through that thing the other day, and I'm, I'm not sure I quite understand it, but it does look to me, I heard they use our wifi, which to me, like we either did do a contract with a satellite, US cellular satellite, which is a monthly charge, and that is not what this council agreed to. We, we agreed to purchase this and get the original equipment, but then when you have a satellite, you, you pay monthly charge. I'm trying to get rid of this. But I think that's what I'm not, I agree with that correctly, that bill from Bob's tennis for US cellular satellite.
I mean, they did agree to that, I mean, it was cart wire camera. It wasn't an in-wire camera. Just go to what, never to do that, I there is some.
I stopped down at the water tower, the tech boys, they're correct, they're didn't see, even want to talk to me. Brian, you were kind of in the ball, and I looked, looked.
After his stall fell down this evening, uh, somebody chose that work. So I called off, and I think he chose that work, he said it was fun. So I gave a point of stop number, kept working. He went through all that, he showed me how to get it loaded, because those sellers in the south of it. Go by your camera, they're able to handle it, believe, and also, you put on a computer, a cab, a scanner, not a scanner?
Yes, we finally got everyone, yes.
I knew we looked at it. And then when I came back, there was a little anomaly, I got the tech stuff. I was able to, to get loaded and, God, I'm stressed, so I don't know if this is working or not. Uh, so then we go back to that history, say, find all of those, just whatever you then saw to understand that the traffic didn't work. That's when you were looking at what the council had passed and agreed to, and that's when you came up with, I don't think that's a system that they passed. And so at that point, that's why I think you're on here, is, is that the right system? Is that what we're supposed to get?
We did it for him.
No, that's, that's what you were looking up, uh, whenever we did, and we pulled up the past history of what was broken.
But we know we agreed to go in with US cellular for satellite fees.
Not the white salt, because that's a big one.
Yeah, we had two majors, and it was just, it said.
And what I, I like, what I had in mind was using, we got wifi here, we got wifi, everyone got wifi. Sure, there's a repeater that hit that antenna on top of the tower. Bounce to the dump, bounce to the sewer plant, bounce to to the recycle, anywhere we want to put one. But those cameras that he got are sixteen hundred dollars a piece.
Now, that single camera, that's a thirty-two. We made two payments. Payment to order, payment upon installation.
Two cameras for thirty-two?
One camera. That was one camera for thirty-two.
One camera, thirty-two.
No case.
We can't afford to fix the streets, though. That much money from just one camera. Anyway, you get cameras, you know, they are a career, gospel type camera, but everybody we got cameras on, we'll bounce off wifi, look on their phone. And that's kind of what I thought, and we loaded that in, that's what we was getting. But he's done, I can, I can, I can explain to you. Brett told me you wanted to do that, because that's as easy as the way.
They told me, they just had to figure out line of sight. That was what they were struggling with.
And they first, they said, you have the doctor who figured, he wrote for them, the process, this is the process you have. Now, having a kidney, it's gonna go down, they're finding out what happened. Why do we have this, and how do we get back to what we
Have you bought the cameras yet?
I mean, I don't know. Are you, you want to be in charge of that, or have, I don't understand what I'm saying, but I do know I run wifi. And if it isn't good enough to get a repeater, to bounce it.
I can get all the committee, we got one committee, if you want that.
I don't feel, if you're the council, I don't feel we ought to spend that much money for one camera, on, eventually, we're gonna do two, three.
We've already spent that, that's just it.
Oh, yeah, I have, I spent sixteen hundred.
I'm still gonna pay the second half.
Oh, yeah, we've had seventeen hundred already.
Yes. So we did not pay the second half of that, you know?
I'm excited.
Then I would say, no, don't pay it until we figure out.
We need to.
He needs to supply what's.
Totally, it's fine to, to be to us. Or it would work.
He quoted it that way until it worked. And he knew where the camera was going, he gave us a quote to what it was supposed to be on. So what he should do. Pretty simple there. Otherwise, he shouldn't have quoted it that way.
I know, does the farmer, the farmer himself, don't think three, ten states away, they'd see what's going on in their house, and what's going on all over the farm?
Somebody needs to talk to Bob and say, hey.
I'll go talk to Bob tomorrow.
Get a ring.
Did what?
A ring.
Still need wifi.
What?
He said, get a ring, out there. Still need wifi.
So before we do the law, will you understand what you're on, Brian?
Brett, I said, you can go over there, talk to them. If they go there, talk to them tomorrow.
Do what?
Brett, I said, you can go over there, talk to them tomorrow. Hasn't, we, we had two pieces of paper, I made you guys, still haven't copied my report. Of what we agreed on. I'll take the, with me, if I have to go on.
And somebody will bark the crap out of, and somebody's supposed to be marked.
You understand what we want?
Yes, yes, yes. I know, I know.
Joe, I had that hard time, he said, well, we can't do it, we can't get a signal. Well, I told him, I can get, I can build a, build a series of cameras myself. It will go a mile away on the water tower.
The, in the symbol, the water tower, what's the issue? The, the water board wants the way it'll get repainted before it actually goes up.
Then get him to paint it.
They don't, they don't have anything to say about it.
We need to go talk to Bob.
Oh, you agree, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. We're gonna talk to him right now, we're gonna talk. Yeah. We're not paying the second half, we're not gonna pay the second half, we don't get. It's not.
We're supposed to take care. Update on YouTube channel, streaming.
No, definitely, here, there.
Wait for that.
Already on it, and just looked up there, there's five or six people watching, that's always watching, and it's pretty wonderful.
They've texted, they don't understand how to get to the channel.
What's that called?
Nothing. Oh, I'm sorry, like fishing, I had to run on the quarter, power the computer.
Does that one of yards talk about, the traffic?
It's using the city wifi.
Okay, that's your open name, right?
That's it, it is. The relents.
Resolution. Twenty twenty-one, dash zero six one four, dash zero one. City park appointment, setting started. What we've done, we've paid.
I make a motion to the grid, relation, twenty twenty-one, zero six one four, dash one.
And what was it?
What, what was it?
Fifteen dollars an hour. You guys got it on?
Already done. Sir, next one.
Please, you have motion on it?
Everybody's bad.
You have a second on it?
We're ready to go to H, Jerry.
It's gonna be a long night, Jerry, but.
Brett, dear decree, sir.
Kathy, does the council have these papers?
No.
Okay, so as we all know, we got, the council approved twenty-nine, and change for the Drayton. That was for Seventeen Streets, right? Our, that's for Seventeen Streets, right?
Twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
Right. Only if there is an eighteen, you can not go up to it, right, I gave that one. Okay, so prior to that, Tyler Meyer had already started on some, we put a stop to it so we can get more bids. However, the council approved, you have to let you or do the three of the most main trees. So that bill was sixty-five hundred on top of the.
I thought it was fifty-five.
No, this, this is good, I'm getting that. I'm getting that. And then. So that was prior to you guys giving the okay for the FEMA stuff. And that's, this is all FEMA as well. And then, while he was here with FEMA staff, uh, Jerry got a call on one that we took down on railroad. I screwed up and forgot about two big ones on Main Street. Uh, and then there was two next to the parish center that were really, really bad, Tyler and Keith both looked down. And, uh, we had to take them down. There was a large one apart that I didn't look up back. And it was completely stamped off on top, so we just dropped that whole thing. So that was another fifty-two. All this will be, seventy-five percent of it will still be covered by FEMA. However, I messed up, so the bill was higher than initially we thought. But I did contact FEMA. They said, yep, it's okay, it's not too late, add, just send me coordinates, what kind of trees, that's what I did. So I just want to make you guys aware of that.
Any timeline yet on money, someone?
You know how many times I've been told three weeks?
Hey Brett.
Yes?
Hey Brett, there's a tree down on Main Street. And there's a big red ex on it, but it's still there.
Yes, that one we looked at. That was stable as stable could be and we knew that we were going to have to add. So I decided we're not going to, we're just going to leave it alone. Tyler looked at it real good. You. Yeah, Keith or Keith looked at it. It's more than same. So we were trying to kind of, obviously it didn't make a huge difference, but. Twenty nine seven.
We've already, we've already uh. Paid a year. I'm going to say twenty nine seven, it's actually. Twenty nine six nineteen ninety four or something. But anyway. I told them. That we absolutely didn't have the money to do this, to drop it to my team. And they understood.
Yeah.
Yeah. But. So if we can't authorize a payment, that's because we don't have much to get and that gets it all spread out. Unless you get it, want to do it, I think we ought to get the FEMA money first and find out what we're at.
Is the initial bid for the twenty nine seven, those trees, those trees all finished? Pardon? Initial bid for the twenty nine seven of seventeen trees, did it help that? Yes, definitely. All fifteen seven, not, I think right now, all things stopped now. We are, we are done with FEMA trees, done grinding, everything. So our twenty seven, or twenty nine seven jumped up to forty two four.
Well. What was the deal you thought you were, the deal you thought you were cured, nineteen hundred, nineteen sixty before this bad dog?
So we have to hit the one top of the way rock up, still standing. Um was uh that came off. And then two trees on uh two stumps. By the road tracks and fire wagon. Those would craft they off, press to be better, lower himself, time of writing. In the end, they're not, they're all waters, stumps, whatever. So that had to come off there. And then there was one other one that uh. And then we bought a sum that was not, hold up, that's a part, the four, two. Oh, yes, came off.
The last item of the total bill. Almost forty, thirty nine and seven, something.
That's three to the left. Yeah, that hasn't changed. There, Brian knows that.
So right, pretty old.
Just, that's just a random thing.
So how much will we still owe? Give you twenty nine seven. I was, I was figuring right around ten, but I can't keep track of this, figuring it out so fast.
No numbers have changed since we all met, Jerry.
How much?
No numbers have changed since the three of us sat down. You have a, so you're not the same since you guys have sat.
No, kidding. We just. We just weren't quite expecting that much. That's what we, that's what we, the council. But you understand, we can't do anything until we get it tracked along.
Brett, you don't have.
And then we'll have to do seventy, if they only give us seventy five percent of the amount, seventy five percent.
Right, you actually can work off like fifteen percent.
We were. Do you understand, Brian? Newsletter failure, Brian Moore.
I reached out to the I O B on what the guidelines are, on what goes in the newsletter. What can and cannot, so that there's really no guidelines. Is that, do you say the same thing, John?
Yeah. I think that's right about that.
So we just need to get, you know, cap things to do with the newsletter once a month. I I went through and got some samples of what goes in there. In the newsletter, because I know. Mrs. Hillman, she wanted to be on the committee and they want to have a committee. But honestly, I I think the biggest thing with this is the newsletter needs to come to the council. And approved to be more explicit. But it sounds like there's no guidelines that we have to follow, you know, whatever we want to put in there, if we're good with the city, we can go in there.
And who decides what goes in and um do you guys do that?
The council should.
Okay.
But would that be considered us censoring your.
I think so. Because I mean, what I, what I saw, I looked up a bunch online and what goes into newsletters is like what we talked about here. You know, what was approved. So then all of, all of the city would get, you know, know what happened here. If they can't listen in on, so they can see what was approved. At the council meetings and any highlights that were coming up of the city and. You know, if you want to get people commended with the codes, like one we're going to talk about later, which cannot be verified, it's out twenty four hours before garbage and twenty four hours after.
But they're not going to be in the street.
Yeah, and you know, remind them about those things. Okay, can you, can you send the information? Everyone else, it's, yeah, it is. And one thing that I will be suggested is that we have a social media policy. We sent a sample. That we can. I will make this bad news. So we have that too, that we can review. I'll get everybody a copy. And do we have a date when we say the newsletter shouldn't come out? Should we have it after, I think we want to approve it, you know, before it goes out.
It's good. It happens many weeks after the application or something, they write the first month of the month.
Well, it's a company that might be on the date of the month, because it's a section of it, so you have to have a source to defend this piece.
Cause we, we're going to have to get one out before July. But we're going to have to have, there are fireworks, we just got them. Cause they already said it all.
And do we not feel that should we need a monthly newsletter? What about you?
Monthly's great.
How are you planning to get it out? From the mail?
It's used a man.
Like, are we going to put it with, now that the municipal utilities, they send a full sheet and then a little. Give them, because it would cost them the answer. You can set up five sheets of paper or something. And you bet. Is that okay? That's what I meant, because that's something we can look at. Because it wouldn't cost them any money.
Cost them, I agree, that's okay.
Well, is that okay? We, I guess we can thank them there.
Other than it's not going to be everywhere. There is eight hundred. I don't know the exact number, eight hundred and change. Mail box. You can post office box on the yellow. But that's great, because I can't remember. But then mail is for every single. Post office box and get that. It's a higher number than three hundred and some odd.
Well, anyone that gets a bill and you can just pull them together.
Correct. Correct. If they get a bill that all the property owners, people that have post office boxes do not, won't get. So I don't know what's up. I'm looking at. I'm sorry, I picked that.
Well, Brian, you have a post here. Discussion's done. General.
Yes.
It's been a year.
The cost extra for these fancy forward.
Okay, I'm doing the various insurance, I think people who like him. Even although for the insurance coverage for. Coming year, it begins on July first. The first page there is the list of the buildings and values. The I C A F that proposed, what says twenty twenty two, no value, but ones that I C A F proposed. And then the changes. That we turned in. For the, we should put on a highway video. This all happens, we're going to through the process of finding the information from the change that happened, so. We got it done. If you can see all of the, all the changes, next page should be. It figures out, no good. And then the illiterate. The illiterate things are happening, possibly, but I'm going to be helpful. Um there were some changes made there to this harvest that I use on the clothing. And then they have moved, maybe the electronic equipment has been moved into contents list, so. Let's be separate. Put it there so that you know there's a change in. Computers and that kind of stuff, you could add extra furniture, which I might just do that. Next page shows that state with values goals and that's what we see. About the values on the buildings, the contracts. About three hundred and nine on love and two hundred and forty dollars in values on buildings. There's books, there was a brand of a G three, the contents. Then you can have an inflation guard on the policy, that's why I. So if the values on buildings, be sure that they don't do any big contracts that that's a change in that. Generally, I believe it remains at three million for the first, there's really that book. We have, there's no uh policy here.